Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we call this meeting to order.
Take it.
In favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
You're open at seven forty-five for the bid opening project for the two thousand twenty-one chip and seal.
Okay, John, we turn that over to you.
Okay, what we got here is we got, we got two bids. You guys just wanna find it out, I guess.
There's only two?
Yeah, just you guys. So we're gonna open these and we're gonna read them off and then we're gonna accept them for review. And then Dave will go to the county, make sure they meet all the specs, and then we'll come back with the best reasonable option. In your Georgia Highway?
Yep.
Alright, so Georgia Highway is... Took my little sticker off. Is your bid in this small one here? Or was it in a larger?
No, that's a supplement, should be in the big one.
Larger ones in here?
Yeah, it should be tabbed.
Yeah, it's not, that's the problem.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll find it.
Should be right there in front.
I didn't see it up here, that's why, I was looking in the back. You're right, I missed that page. Georgia Highway, two million, one seventy-five, three... Nope, no, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm like, whoa, wait a minute.
No, hold on, sorry. We're not gonna take you guys at that number, that's a little out there. That's my bad, that's a section that I wasn't supposed to read right now. See, David, it's not right here at the end.
Yeah, 'cause normally it's like first ten pages.
There's the estimates in there.
It would be like a bid unit page would be a lot more than that.
You had it broken out by pay or by projects, correct?
Yeah, it was two pages.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah, it's the back page.
One ninety-eight, three fifty-six, ninety-three. That sound about right?
Yeah, one ninety-eight, three fifty-six, ninety-three.
Say that again, please.
One ninety-eight?
One ninety-eight, three fifty-six, ninety-three.
Okay, well, that sure beats two million.
Yeah.
We would have gold highways.
Yes, we would have gold in that, yes.
Now with the price of gold now.
Alright, and then Ronyak is our other bid.
And the name of that company?
Ronyak. R-O-N-Y-A-K. Ronyak is one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three twenty-one oh five.
Okay, John, we have no more, right?
That's it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept both bids and get them over to the...
Accept them for review.
Accept them for review.
I'll second that.
One in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'm gonna make a motion, we go ahead and close this meeting.
Second.
One in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed, we're closed with the bid opening at seven fifty. I'm passing the bid specs on to Dave.
John, thank you for coming.
Brought up, it was actually a good point by Nick. Uh, if you're on a state route, the state should be pulling the signs and if you're on the Tomage Road, which is county road, they should be pulling the signs. You know, our township roads are basically subdivision roads. Um, and, and are we legally allowed to take them off of those, those routes? That's a question that I, I want to have answered before we pull them again.
Well, I know when you go down Sandy Lake Road and it hits into Old Forge, there's that little triangle there. I noticed a lot of signs are pulling up there, so.
There's, there's some over on that, some to the.
On the expressway right when you get on and off and it's just, well, is there any pressure we can put on them to come? All those signs?
Yeah.
Just looks really junky down there and then they get, then they run over them with their mowing crew and then they spread them all over the place.
Right.
So, alright, thanks.
But don't, don't we have that five hundred feet from the square from the intersection of eighteen and forty, forty-three?
That's for political signs that you can't put up around the.
Oh, I thought.
No, no other ones are down by the expressway.
The roofing signs and the power wash signs, they put them up on the telephone poles.
Well, and it's a good question because I know there's a homeless guy that sits up on the freeways at times and, and that question was brought up and, and Roy and I discussed this before. Um, there's a lot of things that we cannot do as a township, so. But, but we'll look into it further if we could pull them up. Because I know Kayla's going to be in today and I'll pull them today if we can.
Mike, while we're having announcements, would you introduce this fine gentleman out here from one of your boards?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So this, that's Bruce Nippenberg. He's been, uh, on the Board of Zoning Appeals for approximately thirty years. And then prior to that, he was on, uh, regional.
And he still has hair.
Yes. Prior to that, he was a re- Regional Planning Commission, uh, before that. So I, I, what was the zoning inspector's name when you first started?
Steve Moore.
Steve Moore.
Oh, Lord.
So, yeah.
Oh, that's agent.
Actually, I think when I first started, he was a trustee and after he was trustee.
And he became the town administrator. So you remember this fine gentleman over here, right?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for coming to the meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Meeting guests. We don't have any. Yeah, we don't have any meeting guests. We have minutes to, to review and sign. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the minutes for, uh, four two, twenty twenty-five. Be a second.
Stone move.
I'm in favor, Mike. Yes. Sue.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, now we got the agenda. Does everyone have had a chance to review it?
Yes.
Hey, hey, uh, I would like to have an add-on to the road department. Excessive si- excess, excessive signs. Restricted signs for the police depart- or for the fire department. It seems like nothing's getting done, so. So it's going to be two C. Two C. The road department.
And I have a, I have an add-on for the road department too. I just have a, a quick question I need to, to discuss with Dave.
Okay.
Regarding asphalt chips.
So we should call it two D is asphalt chips? Is that what we?
Yeah.
Asphalt chips. Okay. Well, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the addition, change the agenda, so, uh, under road department, two C signage and two D would be asphalt chips. Is there anything, is there anything else? We're all good?
No, I'll second that.
Okay. I'm in favor, Mike. Yes. Sue.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Okay. I have reviewed the purchase orders and I have signed them, so I'll need a motion to approve those.
Tell me.
I'm in favor, Mike. Yes. Sue.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, I have reviewed and signed the warrants, so I'll make a motion that we accept the warrants.
Second.
I'm in favor, Mike. Yes. Sue.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. Public comments, do we have any?
No public comments. Let me get that to John.
Wow. Safety concerns. Excessive rain. Are we about done with that, Dave?
I'm hoping.
Well, we, for the road seemed pretty good. You didn't really have any flooding, did you, or?
No, we had some. We had some flood, yeah.
Did you lose any trees with the wind?
No, we got a couple we got to take down or, or hung up on other trees, but nothing came down on the roads, so.
Yeah, we got to let summer in here. I'm tired of this weather. It's going to be ninety degrees here in like a week. Yeah, it'll be in Florida. Okay. Well, let's get the meeting started. Hey, police department.
Yep. Thanks, Mike. Couple items for the board this morning. One item on our old business. Just an update on the new officer hire status. Our candidate just completed the psychological evaluation, uh, component on Monday. Uh, waiting for that report to come back and assuming no issues there, then we'll be scheduling the final phase, which will be the medical drug screen. And after that, uh, assuming no issues there, I'll be bringing, uh, forward that candidate for formal appointment, so I'll follow up with you accordingly once we've completed these final two pieces. Uh, a couple items on our new business. Just an update, information line from the board. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Appreciation Week. Um, as the board knows, our dispatch center is, uh, the team that utilizes through Kent State University Police Department. Uh, it's just a nice opportunity this week to recognize them and thank them for the work they do, which almost always goes on behind the scenes, but they're that first voice of help on the phone for anybody that picks up and calls nine one one for a police need here in the township. So, uh, it was my pleasure to take lunch up to their team yesterday. Uh, they got a staff of thirteen up there total, so they doing a nice job. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize them and recognize Telecommunicators Appreciation Week this week. I do have one item that will require board approval, and that is the approval of a purchase order in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars to Midwest Public Safety. This is for body worn camera technology upgrades and digital storage. Brief follow-on to that, as, um, I brought to the board's attention at our last meeting that we did receive a grant through the state to fund a significant portion of this project. And I think, like, the total amount on that grant was, what did I tell you, Sue?
Thirty-three.
Yeah, thirty, thirty-three and some change, so, yeah, this is a follow-up from that, just to process the purchase order.
So that, Roy, that's going to be minus the grant amount?
Uh, that'll, well, yeah, that'll, the P O will need to be for that amount, but we'll have grant funding that's going to go towards it, but the P O will need to be for that number.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Um, I move that we accept the purchase order for, um, the forty-three thousand to Midwest Public Safety for body worn camera technology upgrade and digital storage.
And I'll second that for discussion. So Roy, is that, so that'll be all the newest stuff?
Yeah, that'll be, uh, the body more cameras we're using now are their first gen cameras. This is going to be the gen four. So there's been significant upgrades over the years with their technology, so the biggest component we're going to see is, uh, the software platform and interface is being totally revamped. It's much more user friendly. It's also got a much longer battery life on these units, so that's going to be one of, one of the biggest pluses of the upgraded technology.
How long have we had the other ones?
We started with B W Cs, I think, back in twenty seventeen, originally with L three and eventually transitioned over to G-TAC, so, but overall, I believe since seventeen.
Wow, that's good. Okay. This is all in favor, Mike. Yes. Sue.
Yes.
Nick, your motion passed.
And that's all I have for you this morning.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chief Malali?
Okay, nothing on their old business, just a couple of updates, uh, also on the new business. Um, we did have an order for, uh, the Ford Explorer that we were going to get. It is still in limbo and has not been delivered. Um, I called them the other day and just like everybody else, we're sitting and waiting. Um, so just an update on that, not that anybody noticed.
How long you been waiting?
Um, it's been about a month now.
Okay.
So not, not too.
Not bad.
Yeah. Uh, and there's a reminder of the senior luncheon on April thirtieth at eleven A M. Uh, people are starting to, uh, respond, uh, that they got flyers in the mail.
I have, I have a question.
Yes.
About your luncheon. Um, in the past, we've had a section where, um, vendors or, um, nonprofit groups could bring in a table and set it up and let people know what they do, what their activities are in the community. Are we going to have that, the table set up for, for that too?
Same way.
And then they would just, if anybody wants to do that, they just give you a call?
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Greg, where, where are you setting up? In the new bays or the old bays?
So the setup for the lunch will be in the new bays and the vendors will be in the old bays.
Wow.
So, and before we.
That's a lot of space, so it doesn't matter. If it rains, it rains.
Right. Remember before we had to rent tents, but we won't need to do that this time, so.
Well, that's great.
What kind of good food are you going to feed?
Whatever people, whatever people drink.
Whatever they drink?
Yeah. So we'll, we'll, it, it'll, it'll be plenty. It always is.
Always is, good. Looking forward to that.
Um, and then the last thing was just.
I know you are.
I know.
The entry level firefighter applications close on April eighteenth. I have fifteen applications in right now, so that's a good number.
Is that about where you were last year, or?
Uh, fifteen to twenty.
That's good.
So we, we put it out for a little bit longer last time, um, but, but this one's a better process this time.
When would they start, once you figure it out?
I'm hoping to, uh, have someone chosen by, uh, June first and then maybe start by, uh, August first.
Well, that's good.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, admin, how are you?
Um, old business, I have an update. At the, um, two meetings ago, I talked about A D, A D P implementation and it was requested that we meet with A D P, um, to discuss if we could use the time and attendance tracking for police and fire. Um, we did have a brief meeting. We were going to have some follow-up, but I did get an email from A D P, which I shared with the board, um, giving some commentary on, on that, and so what they told us is that they do have, um, other entities, cities that use A D P. They actually use a platform called Time and Labor Management for those services, um, but they're large entities like City of Cleveland and others. Um, for Brimfield to adopt A D P for police and fire would be to adopt a totally different A D T, A D P time platform called this Work, Workforce Manager, um, and unfortunately, the cost of that, because of the complexities and, and pay structure, um, that those areas have, it would be about three times the cost and implementation is much longer. It's like a twenty-six week implementation. Um, what we were purchasing for, um, usage is just A D P essential time. Um, and so, uh, again, after we talk through it, police and fire use a system today for tracking. Um, so to go up to a higher level system to accommodate that while they're already paying for two systems, um, just does not necessarily make financial sense to add another system when they already have different systems that they're using. So we can import a C S V file from our, their current platforms and upload it into A D P. Um, and we'll, of course, once we get into implementation, they'll be heavily involved in that process to make sure everything runs smoothly. But at this point in time, unless we want to invest in a higher level platform, the recommendation is just to set up C S V files, um, into A D P for those two areas. Okay?
Okay.
Um, next item, I'm requesting board approval to award the twenty twenty-five Community Event Sponsorship Grant to Victory Baptist Temple.
Okay. I, I would like to work with that and, um, the event, the event that, um, that Victory Baptist is, is giving to the community on, uh, Saturday, October the fourth, twenty twenty-five, from two o'clock to four o'clock. The festival will consist of pony rides, hay rides, carnival games, balloon animals, and an apple launcher. All at no cost to those who attend. We will also provide free hot dogs, chips, and water. And I'm the no pick representative on the board here, so it's my honor to, um, give to Victory Baptist this fifteen hundred dollars to offset the cost of their overall program and it goes to everyone in the community is welcome. So Pastor Wetzel, we are very pleased to be able to do that.
And I'll second that motion for discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Pastor, we really appreciate all the stuff you do for this community, so, you know, by, like you said, by giving it to him, it goes to the, to the whole.
It goes to the whole entire community to come to that.
Yep, amen.
And I'll be there.
I'm in favor, Mike. Yes. Sue.
Yes.
Motion passed. Hey.
All right, new business, um, approval needed to hire Devon Ship to the Equipment Operator Labor Position in the Road Department, uh, contingent on background check and substance test.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion that we hire Devon Ship to the Equipment Operator Labor Position in the Road Department, contingent on background check and substance test.
Second.
I'm in favor, Mike. Yes. Sue.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And second item, approval needed to hire Tom Wees into the part-time seasonal labor position in the Road Department, contingent on background check and substance test.
Okay, I'm going to make that motion.
Second.
Dave, how many, how many years has he been with us, Dave?
Tom?
Yeah.
Uh, I think this is his third year. He was going to be with us last year, but he has, uh, a cadet school come up, so he, he was off last year.
Well, he should be graduating from the academy soon, right?
Yes, I think that is, I think that is, this is his year to graduate.
What, what, what academy is he in?
Uh, I'm not positive.
Yeah, I can't remember either.
I can't off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I would welcome him back because he's been great with you, hasn't he?
Yeah, he's, he's been doing a great job.
Okay. Okay, I'm in favor, Mike. Yes. Sue.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And just to.
Dave, when would he start?
Uh, sometime here in May.
Okay, and then this new road department guy, when would this?
It'd be about the same.
Okay.
Um, just a comment, um, the Parks and Rec Department held the Easter egg hunt at Town Center Fields, um, this weekend. So, um, just want to send a thank you especially to Cassie and Hannah, um, as well as Joe and, um, Jendy for assisting at the Easter egg hunt. Um, it was very, it wa- it was a really nice turnout, you know, the first time holding an event. Um, kind of a trial and error and you learn a lot of things, but honestly, I thought it was a really good showing, very well put together. Um, a little cold, ground was a little soggy, um, but everybody seemed to have a fun and kind of the, the residents that came in were flowing in and out of there pretty nicely and I thought it was a really nice event, so thank you, Cassie and Hannah.
It's a shame that Joe didn't wear his outfit to the meeting today.
The Easter bunny is not here today with us.
Well, that was great.
Yeah.
The field's not damaged, is it?
No, no. A little soggy, little footprints left, but otherwise it was, uh, left unscathed.
Okay, well, that was great.
And, and Roy showed up as well and Sue. Very nice.
Okay, that's great. Thanks, Cassie. Okay, Mike, zoning?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, permit fees here today at twenty-four thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. Our old business, woodland reserve condominium, uh, development at five zero three sixty route forty-three, continued site work. Roadway is in and several homes are under construction. Uh, Mark and I are just finishing up the tip on that one. That one's taking a little bit longer. It's a little bit more complicated, but we will finish it up.
Those are some good looking, that's a good looking home.
Yeah, they are.
How many square feet?
Um, you know, they're, they range, most of them are around sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred, so.
That's nice.
Yeah. Uh, VA Cancer and Imaging Infusion Center, uh, continuing interior construction, site work. Uh, Joe's barbecue is framing, uh, that looks good. Um, grading, uh, excavating work has started at Discount Drug Mart. It, the, the pad is ready for, um, construction. And then we're still working with, um, the county reviewing, you know, the studies for the traffic flow in and out and, uh, we did have a meeting. Mike, you were part of it, um, so it sounds like the county's on it. And then, uh, Jared Fleet Systems, um, the construction is complete and they're planning open house tomorrow from four to seven, so.
You know, they, uh, they moved in construction equipment next to the Brimfield Family Restaurant.
Yeah, they, yeah, they're going to start demo. Um, should be demoed today.
For Dollar General.
Yes, yeah, so you'll see that, that go up pretty fast. They, they usually go up pretty quick.
You said that should be possibly open by the fall?
Uh, Dollar General will probably be like a ninety-day build. It, it goes really quick, so.
Well, I tell you, I've heard from more people that miss that Dollar General.
Oh, yeah. You know, it'd be, it'd be nice to have them open again.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, I do have one question on the, the, this is down on forty-three.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Do we, what's their thought about restaurants or businesses that might fall around those, kind of like the way Tomage is? I mean, do they have any ideas of where those would go or if they're going to do any?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be with the water line going down State Route forty-three, it's going to open up properties all the way down, so we can get restaurants all the way.
Oh, so it's not a, they don't have it included in their project?
No, no, we're just tiffing it and we're putting it down, down the street.
All right, okay. You, you said that'll be, how, how many condos?
I think it's a, uh, off the top of my head, I think it's a hundred and four. So, and I, I want to say we have about eighteen of them permitted right now for construction.
Now, are those rentals or are those purchases?
Those are purchased.
You can purchase those?
They purchase.
And now you've got eighteen people that want, want, want to build?
Um, no, Ryan has applied and, and they're putting those up, so I don't know if those are all sold yet, um, but they are going up. They're all permitted.
So they're more like high-end, aren't they?
They are, yeah. First floor master suites, bedrooms are up.
Very nice. No more mowing, no more shoveling?
I would say that the, the model should be up within the next month, so.
Oh, they're going quicker?
Yeah, yeah.
And working through all that mud?
Oh, yeah. There's a ton of mud up there too.
Oh, well, thanks.
Yeah, it's, it is a good find. At least we're going to get that water down forty-three with that project, so.
And that's going to go all the way to Malloy? Is that where it's going to go or just?
No, we're going to be a thousand feet short of Howe.
Okay.
So there'll be a little bit of a gap, but we'll be pretty.
When, when were they going to start putting it in?
Um, we're working on the tip, so first the financial, so.
The year or so?
Yeah, it'll probably be in that year.
That's good. Get some businesses in that portion of the gym.
And we will. As soon as that water comes down, you'll see people sell their land, you know, I think everybody's been.
Then they're going to yell at you and they're going to yell at us, but you can't tell landlord owners what they can do with their money if it fits into the zoning.
The funny thing is, is that the people that complain, you go back a year from there, let's, let's look at all the complaints that we got. And Bruce, you know, you're aware of this, you know, we, we did, uh, Maple Crest and we did, uh, Meyer Menards and all the restaurants and all these down there and the people that complained, I don't hear those complaints no more. You go down there and the parking lots are filled. They're just completely packed. So it tells us that we're moving in the right direction, so.
Well, anybody can buy those lots down there at forty-three, right?
Correct.
So if you didn't want anything built, you could just buy them all and leave them as a cornfield?
Yeah, you could. I mean, everybody's got the right to purchase and leave it and if they don't want it in their backyard, they always have that right to purchase it and leave it, leave it empty.
Mike, I was going to say, would you take a minute and explain, uh, if you guys know on, on social media and everybody hears it, people complain, no more apartments, no more townhomes, why is the township allowing this to happen? Can you speak to that, just, you know, when an area is zoned and how that works and?
Yeah, so, you know, if you're zoned for apartment complexes, uh, I mean, we can't stop it. You're coming into the proper zoning and they bring water and sewer and it's a vacant lot and somebody wants to sell it, we can't stop that. Uh, we had a ton of complaints, uh, and Jendy and I and Kayla worked on this diligently. We had a ton of complaints that they didn't want subdivisions on some of these old farms, for example, Dussel. Uh, so we reached out to Dussel and we said, well, we better change your zoning and put it as agriculture because everybody's complaining. Uh, you know, they don't want a subdivision here and, and the doctor had called back, uh, from the farm and, and, you know, we reached out to him and he said, absolutely not. I want to keep that. If I want to sell this someday and it goes to a subdivision, that's my right. Uh, so, you know, with, with that being said, the, and, and the same thing with, um, um, Carter Lumber's properties. You know, if, if they decide to do that someday with subdivisions, they have that right and I would say he's probably one of the biggest property owners we have uh, in town and, and, uh, they haven't sold the subdivisions, but they are zoned correctly for it. Um, but yeah, if it's zoned correctly, we can't stop it. It's just a, it's just a formality of, of getting zone approved, making sure that all the zoning setbacks and everything works outright, but, uh, very seldom do we seek a use variance. I haven't seen too many of those, uh, come through, um, or even get a, approved just because of the Duncan factors that are going, you know, with the Board of Zoning Appeals. And keep in mind, our commercial, where everybody say we're being, we're being built up, we're still only at five percent of the total land of Brimfield is commercial.
Just to kind of add to that too, every bit of Brimfield Township is zoned for something, industrial, commercial, or residential.
Correct.
That's the way every other city, township, everybody, every la- every piece of land in all of those sections are zoned.
Correct.
So as long as anybody that buys it and builds what it's zoned for, no one can stop anyone.
We cannot stop it, right.
So if that land wasn't zoned residential, it could have been zoned industrial and people could have built, you know, a workshop there or a big factory.
That's correct.
Or they could have built a, another mall.
That's right.
So somebody's going to be able to build on it no matter what it is.
And, and we went into detail over the last eight years and we worked on, uh, something called the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and you guys passed it at this level as well and, you know, we, we meet with the zoning commission, has public hearings, we listen to the residents. Uh, we get the residents involved, regional planning was passing out flyers to, to get surveys back and forth and we listened to all the surveys and we listened to them at the, at the meetings and our compli- Comprehensive Land Use Plan was a master plan for all of the land usage so that we don't overbuild in any aspect and that's all the way till two thousand and fifty. And then we locked in more agriculture than we have had in over thirty years, so.
Well, go ahead.
That committee that all those decisions go through, those go to the zoning boards, right?
Correct.
So they're all of our Brimfield Township residents that are very, very good at zoning and all that. They're the ones making the decision, not, not this board right here.
No, no, no. So they made all the decisions. We've had the public hearings, we invited the public to come, we passed out flyers and handed on social media. The county had, uh, passed it out at Brimfest as well as some of our events here. You know, Todd was here diligently trying to, to get that together and, uh, we updated it and, and the land use plan is locked in and that's what sets our z- our zoning map. So whatever is in that zoning, uh, Comprehensive Land Use Plan dictates what goes into the map, uh, and so we don't overbuild. And like I said, five percent of commercial is not that bad considering you have freeway, uh, of two exits off of seventy-six and you have railroad, um, you know.
We probably have, how many total zoning people are there with alternates?
Uh, seven. Seven zoning commission members and seven Board of Zoning Appeals.
So those fourteen are probably the smartest people in town in regards to zoning and they're our neighbors, I guess. I'd rather than be making the decisions on how the town would be made up than, than me.
And, and you know, some of the, you know, they do their due diligence. Uh, Bruce is, is chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals, has been for a long time, does a very good job at it. The board is trained and in fact, we have training tonight as well. We have the attorneys come in and train them once a year, uh, to go over all the aspects of it. So we're doing everything legally, uh, but no, you cannot legally stop somebody that comes in. We do the count plan, we do the zoning plan and, and the whole. Everybody in Brimfield has a right to, to speak at that time and we'd rather them come speak at the boards than, than on social media. It doesn't mean anything to put it on social media. It means nothing to the board. The boards are, are here for a reason. You come in. If you have a, an opinion and don't like something, come to the boards and we'll find out, you know, how this stuff works, so.
Social media is evil. All I know is that you look through some of those Brimfield forum pages on Facebook. A lot of the people that are making the most noise are living in subdivisions that used to be farms, you know, so.
That's true.
They're, they're nothing but keyboard warriors. So I think our boards do great.
They do a great job and, you know.
Was that answered for you? I'm sorry. Okay. I didn't mean to cut in, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you guys do a great job.
Thank you. Busy.
Busy, busy.
Thanks, Bruce, and all your, your compadres out there, they do a great job.
And he hasn't lost his mind yet. So, okay, well, thank you. Mike, does, you're good?
Good job.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, road department.
Uh, yeah, just some, some updates. Uh, starting next week, we go on ten-hour days, so we'll start working Tuesday through Fridays. Uh, the road levy, just want to let people know there's a road levy coming up in the May ballots for the township where we can, uh, continue doing our maintenance improvement of roadways and that stuff. It's just a renewal, it's nothing, nothing new. Uh, we're getting motors ready for, uh, mowing season. Uh, we have a hot box until this Thursday. I actually talked to them and they allowed me to keep it one more week where we could finish fixing potholes and some areas on the sides of the roads. Uh, we, of course, we had the chip and seal bid opening this morning, which went very well. Uh, a board approval, I need the board's approval to enter into the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six O dot salt contract for seventeen hundred ton of salt. This year they're doing something a little different. We can get five hundred ton of salt in the summer and then we'll get twelve hundred in the winter.
Okay, Dave, I'm going to go ahead and make that motion?
Second. I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. I'm in favor, Mike. Yes. Sue.
Yes.
Motion passed. Can't believe you're thinking of salt already.
I just put salt down with it last week, so, and it's a continuous animal. Let's just put it that way.
Uh, we won't have numbers on, that's just to get everybody's totals in and then they'll, then they'll do the bidding process at, you know, sometime in June, July, so. We won't get the numbers for what the total price of the salt is per ton until then.
Well, that's great, Dave.
Okay, and that concludes my part of it.
Okay, I just want to get some kind of finality to this, uh, this, uh, sign debacle. I know an entire. I know an entire first row of of parking spaces to the gazebo is filled with. Uh, reserved signs for our firefighters, who are truly in the best shape of most of the people in the township. My thing is, when you get older people, or if they wanna use the gazebo, none of them can park in the front. Cause, so you got older people parking in a far- farther parking spot, having to walk all the way up there. While we have all these sign, all these fire department signs preserving all the spots, and nobody's ever parked at them. So what I think needs to be done is all those signs, except for maybe four of them, taken down and put them back. I mean, we never had that many signs at the old fire department, we never had an issue. I mean, I know, I think when they put them up, they wanted in case there was a big event, and so firefighters or safety forces could get in here and have a spot. But I'm telling you, if there's an event, they are gonna find a place to park. It it's not fair to the parks department, or whoever, that the fire department takes all those spaces. There are, I mean, this is the township's building, it's not the fire department's building, so. I would like to get some of those signs moved, I'd leave four of them up there for the fire department, and and they can park back there.
Uh, well, I've already had a discussion with Craig on it, we're gonna move them, but right now, my my thoughts are roadway.
Right, I I get that, but if you have time.
Right, when we get time, we're gonna we're gonna ship them.
Yeah, we don't need that many spaces, okay? We just need to make it accessible, cause Kancy, you're talking about possibly having, you said, the boomers wanna play up there and stuff?
Yeah.
There's just no room for them to park, I mean, we really need a bigger parking lot, period, you know, whether we can. Find some property, and I don't know, we just need more par- parking here.
Yeah, like I said, me and Craig discussed it, I'm gonna take now a group of group of the signs, and we're gonna switch them to a different spot.
That's good.
So.
Down there at the parks?
We're just.
Yeah, let's just make it more accessible for for the public, has anyone ever called about doing a wedding out there yet?
Um, they haven't yet, since we reopened it, no.
Okay, it'll be coming. Okay, well, thanks, that's all I wanted, Sue, and then you had one on asphalt chips?
Yeah, asphalt chips, there's leftover when you're done with the job, and, um, uh, I was in mediation. A couple of weeks ago, and the mediator and the family on the other side, um, having a a big issue. At their home, and we're working with them, and trying to get everything settled, and working together for us here, and they can do their cleanup. But one of the issues that they had is their driveway going into their property. Um, it could really use some asphalt chips, or anything that we could have that helped them with their driveway. Because they are financially strapped, so we talked it over at the mediation table, and the mediator said, well. You find out what you can find out, and get back with me and let us know, so this is what, I have to bring this up to the board. So that we can, uh, let them know whether we do or whether we don't, so then I'm gonna turn it over to David, he can tell me about what happens to. Something that's overage like that.
Uh, like the overage for, uh, the asphalt grindings on the road projects we do, a lot of the companies kinda put it, they put it in their bids to take the grindings. Where they can do other projects with them, like parking lots and that kinda stuff, where they do recycled asphalt and all that. So we don't receive any free grindings from them, so I I have no material from them them jobs that come back to me.
Okay, do do we need to have something in writing to give to the mediator, what our policy is, that that we don't have those available?
I think the minutes of the meeting here, just to bring it up, would suffice, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
I mean, they 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 can get some of these grindings, I mean, if they, I mean, they're, you can find somebody that'll haul that haul you some grindings. I mean, they're on the lower cost bit of material to use, but I I we can't be putting stuff on private property.
Well, I know. But I wanted it not to be my say-so, I wanted it to be a board say-so, to put more punch to it.
Now, we do that for one person, you're gonna, Dave's gonna be running grindings all around the town, we can't be doing that.
Well, and that's all everybody's money that's being spent to pay taxes, so I wouldn't wanna be paying for my neighbor's driveway down the street.
Exactly, yeah.
If I have to pay for my.
But thanks for bringing up so much.
Good discussion, thank you.
Maybe there's somebody out there listening that would.
Yeah, someone out there listening and has an excess, they have somebody that can use it.
Okay, parking wreck.
Um, so we had the Easter egg hunt, as Holly mentioned, on Saturday, um, I wanted to thank all of our sponsors, um. Walmart, the Dalzell Insurance Agency, the Deval-Buntain Insurance Agency, and Chase Bank. Um, they donated all of the candy and egg items for that event, so we did not have to pay anything out of pocket for those. Um, I also wanted to thank the Kelso House for allowing us to use the eggs, the bunny costume, and all the other supplies for that event. So all in all, we ended up, um, with only like a, I think like a hundred and fifty dollars out of pocket for that event, so that was really great. Um, I also wanna thank the Girl Scouts, Karen Cheney's Girl Scout group for volunteering, I think we had six girls and two troop leaders come. Um, and I, once again, wanted to thank the police department for donating the prize baskets for the golden eggs, um, those are really well received, so thank you for that. Um, Brim Festivals updates, um, so I'm completing a sponsorship form, um, for all three of the Brim Festivals. Um, that I'll be sending out to, I'll be mailing to our donors, our big donors, um, and I'll also be sending out an email campaign about that later this week. Um, some updates on Touch a Truck, we have eighteen vehicles registered, I spoke to ODOT yesterday, they will be bringing a salt truck. And a, um, slope mower, one of those robotic slope mowers, if you've seen those, I saw one on Route eighteen. A couple of weeks ago, and I called them, I'm like, can you please bring that, so I'm really excited for that. Um, we've booked some inflatables and games, uh, we have face painting, and we have some costume characters joining us this year, so I'm really excited. Um, our Let's Glow Brimfield event, which is our July summer event, um, we are booking some glow attractions, a silent disco. Um, we're designing some t-shirts for that event, and we are looking at doing an outdoor movie. And then.
What's a silent disco?
Oh, a silent disco is when you have, um, like a dance floor, and you have headphones that you put on, and you can choose what music you dance to. And you can dance to them, and they're really popular with the young people. Regular disco, we could do that, too.
I don't have my big tall shoes anymore.
Um, and then Swamp Town Fest, uh, we've got one band booked so far, um, we're looking for some kinda specialized. Um, entertainers for that event, so I booked, um, Hunter Skeens and the Forerunners, who was at Brimfest a couple of years, they're kind of like a bluegrass rock band. So I felt like they'd fit that event very well, um, we're booking food vendors, I've reached out to some different artisan craft vendors. Um, some really specialized, like leather smiths, wood, uh, woodworkers, that kinda thing. I reached out to a chainsaw carver who I'm working with to possibly do a demonstration for us, um, the axe throwing trailer. Of course, some inflatables and attractions, and we're working on some different contests, we had a planning meeting, was that last week? I can't remember, maybe two weeks ago, all I can think about is eggs right now, so. Uh, yeah, so we had a meeting with the Kelso House, um, to go over some of those things, and we'll be having some meetings going forward. And then, um, I'm also keeping a Brim Festivals planning document in Google Sheets online, um, that I'll be sending a link out for. So if you ever have any questions, I mean, obviously, you're free to contact me, but that's, that'll be a living document online, that you can just check on to see what's been reserved. How we're doing with our budget, all that kinda stuff.
Oh, I just wanted to ask you if you wanna say anything about the recycling cleanup.
Oh, yes.
Day that we've got coming.
Yes, um, Saturday, May seventeenth, uh, we'll be having our spring cleanup event. Uh, we are also park partnering with a new, um, IT recycling company, we're using Summit Recycle this year. Um, so they'll be doing our IT recycling, uh, we have the Hazel Streets, um, metal recycling coming again. And then we'll have our, um, general large item recycling, and also we're doing a flea market this year. So if instead of recycling or, um, dumping your items in the big dumpster, you wanna try and resell them, uh, we're taking registrations for that as well.
Kancy, this might be a joke question, but on the IT recycling?
Mm-hmm.
Do they, do they clear everything off when they take those in and destroy the hard drives, or how's that all happen?
They do, yeah, that's part of their services.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up to the company, most most do, uh, most of them are going to try, how they make money is they try to resell components. Yeah, if they're gonna resell the components, they'll make sure that they're ethically, they're vital. Uh, or if you're using components for recycling, uh, they're gonna shred them.
So if you have extra computers laying around, it's a place to bring them?
We, as a government agency, cannot use that service.
No, I meant from a, not government agency.
What?
From not a government agency, if you just had computers.
Oh, yeah, and and yes, you have computers at the hold for any new devices, yes, you can bring them in and accept them. Make sure that they're safely disposed of, um, you know, and one thing that people don't realize is a lot of electronics contain. Azure's materials or rare metals, so putting in your trash is actually bad, or some trash can is more effective. Um, especially if you've got old CRT, old tube monitors, you can't put those in your in your trash, they're possible to get damaged.
Thanks, Joe, there's there's gold in them computers, isn't it?
There is, there is, there is a lot of people, if you if you wanna learn some new new tricks, uh, and will say, please do it safely. Because reclaiming gold for a computer does require, um, use of some pretty strong acids, so wear gloves and do it outside. Uh, to meet the other half of our fire department, they will be doing a nice ride to the yard, and just get on your phones.
Yeah, I saw something on social media about these guys getting gold out of their computers.
Yes, I've seen lots of videos of, it's lucrative, but I'm too clumsy to try.
Well, that's good. Okay.
Oh, that's okay, um.
Hey, so the festival's gonna have a woodsy feel, huh?
Yes, absolutely.
Are you gonna have like a bog monster contest?
Um, well, we're fitting Joe for the bog monster costume right now, so. Yes, that would be.
We could have Dave grow his hair out again.
Yes.
Bring some scum cabbage.
Well, somebody had a birthday, I'm not allowed to say who turned sixty.
It wasn't me.
Okay, happy birthday, whoever it was. Okay.
All right, um, well, the renovations at the baseball field, um, have started, they are anticipating those will be completed this week. Um, weather permitting, and then also the building demolition at McGuire Park, um, there were the two outbuildings, the one that was already semi collapsed. And then the, um, standing building there, um, they will be demolishing them, actually, I was just talking to Helmling this morning. Um, they're gonna try and get down there today and get started on that.
Yeah, I might run by, but thanks.
Yep, and then, uh, my last item is, uh, I think beginning of March, I brought to you, um, the Otarma Risk Management Report. Um, Otarma came out and did a risk management assessment in December, um, and issued us a report of just some recommendations they were making. Um, to reduce reduce our risk in our parks, um, so we've resolved a lot of these items already, but these were some outstanding items we were looking at. Um, so when I submit our, um, action plan to them, I just need to let them know that these items have been addressed. And that they're, we're working on them, so, um, we can take our time to decide what we wanna do with these, um, but I just wanted to bring these up. And the full report is in Teams, if you wanted to see that, but, um, some of the items that they had mentioned were, um. The restoration or removal of the old equipment at Lions Park, I know that's been an outstanding item, um, when I say old equipment, I mean. The metal slide, the old tires, um, the swing set, the jungle gym, and the monkey bars. Um, and that is because they do not have proper fall safe zones, and they do not have, um, fall safe material underneath them. Like the mulch or the, uh, rubber.
You know, say we wanna get rid of the slide, and, but I mean, we could put material underneath them to make them.
We could, yes, if we wanted to.
What is your thought?
Um. Personally, it'd be my recommendation to remove them, because the cost to, well, we'd probably also have to move the equipment as well. Because it's not just the surfacing, it's the area around them, so if the kids are going down the slide, they need to have a certain area. Um, for them to safely exit the slide, and then I know.
What you're talking, you know, if you ever go down Ogilvy, West Virginia, they got a premier thing, and there's, it's like walking on carpet.
Yeah, that rubber material, yeah, um, and you can do mulch, we have mulch at the, um, the new playground that is fall safe. So there are options for that.
But if we take that stuff out, what do you wanna put in there?
I don't know, well, cause I know we would need to talk about, that's a a further discussion about, um, the lion shelter, cause that's in that same area. So if we wanted to remove that eventually as well, um, doing something with that area. Um, some other items that were mentioned were, was the, um, removal of the dog park equipment at Cranbury Creek Park. Specifically, there was a metal, um, like culvert pipe, uh, piece that had a sharp metal edge. And there was an old tire that was starting to, um, disintegrate there.
Can we just, if Dave has time this summer, just move that out?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Can you just replace the tire with another one?
Um, we could, I could look into what their recommendations were for replacing them.
You can take that big tire from the park, but that, dogs will love that.
Um, another item that they brought up, um, was, I think it was in twenty twenty-one, we got some new pieces at the. Um, playground, and one of those was the custom sit-in dump truck playground piece, um, that has the Brimfield Township logo on it. They did note that as a non-commercial grade item, so it was their recommendation to remove it, um, but that would be up to us. Um, whether we wanted to pursue that or not, um, just because their concern is that it is not as durable as commercial grade equipment. So there's a possibility that someone could potentially break it.
I mean, let's, let's go.
Well, I have a confession to make, I grew up on a farm, and when I was a kid, I was running the barn rafters, and the big twelve inch. The big twelve inch beams in there, and my parents didn't think anything at all about me running that, because I would fall into haymouth when I fell. But, uh, I mean, sometimes you can just be so overprotective, that the child misses out on a lot of things that he should know. And finally, I learned I shouldn't be doing that.
When you fell?
Yeah.
I got lots of scores growing up, falling off things.
Remember that merry-go-round on round and round?
Yeah, and the merry-go-round goes round and around, yeah, some things you have to learn the hard way.
Amen.
Um, and then the last two items were, um, the shipping container at the soccer fields, um, they were recommending that we either secure. The shipping container or remove it entirely, um, to prevent theft or injury, so that would be something I'd like to address, um, in the future.
What do you mean, secure it, isn't there a lock on it, or?
There is, um, but I think there's some concern about, so there's, there's a man door with a lock on it, but there's another door that can be. Pulled open.
Oh, so there's not a lock on the other door?
No, I mean, it would take probably two people, two or three people to open it, but it's theoretically possible to open it yourself.
Well, that makes sense, I sure, I would secure that.
Did have a lock on it one time, you talking about the end of the doors?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a lock on there one time.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they got balls from soccer popping them open, I don't, I don't know, we had a master locks on it at one time.
Yeah, I mean, and I can see that, you know, unfortunately, there's a guy that worked for me, and, uh, I mean, I know it's not wood, but his brother. Climbed in through the roof of a wooden structure, and they were in there smoking cigarettes, and caught on fire, and they all died. Yeah, so.
Well, is there such a thing as moving that container down to the road department, would they have a use for it down there?
I think the soccer program uses it, I think.
Well, it's, I think it's a good time to talk about it, because if we are to keep that shipping container there. We have to make some substantial changes to it, um, so, one, I don't believe that really the shipping container is permitted to be in that area. And then, two, if we're gonna keep it, we would have to put windows and door access.
You have to put windows?
We would, because if somebody got gets trapped in there, there's, there's no way out, and there's no way to know somebody's in there unless you unlock it. So, this, this one has been, I think, a sub, on a a subject that, you know, has been. Out there for quite a while, and we just haven't addressed it, um, but especially now that it's in this report, we we really have to decide what we're going to do. Um, if we are, if we want to have some type of storage area there. I think the recommendation would be that it's not a shipping container, that it's some other source that's compliant, um.
A shed?
A shed, yeah, um, but thi- this one is really something that we need to, we need to address sooner rather than later. So whether it's moving that shipping container for storage somewhere else, uh, you know, I don't know, but we we do have to address this one.
Well, is there a spot over there if you get rid of the retainer, or container, is there a spot for that we could allow someone to put a shed up if they wanted to do that? For storage for sporting events?
And then we're gonna probably give them the same thing, too, that'll have to be.
Well, at least it has a door.
If it was a regular. If it was a regular shed, it would, it would meet the needs, yeah.
I mean, would there be a spot down there that we could put it, move it away from there and help? I mean, just to give them the opportunity, if they wanted to put one in there, they could?
I mean, I think if you, if we, if we get rid of the shipping container, they could probably put the shed in the same location or, you know, they could also probably put it on the other side of the fence, off of the field altogether. Um, so there are, are options.
Well, if we've been warned about this, I mean, we really need to react on it.
We do, yeah.
Because if somebody gets hurt over there now, we're, we're liable, because we knew it, we didn't do anything about it, so.
Dave, what's your thoughts?
It's a shipping container. I mean, there is concrete underneath the shipping container for it to sit on.
So they could put a, something on it?
You could put some, I mean, like one of these kinda sheds back here, you could put something like that on there where it's compliant.
Have you gone inside to see what's in there?
Uh, I've been there every once in a while.
Is there a lot in there, Cassie?
Yeah, I think, um, part of the concern also was the building was initially used for storage of the goals. That's why it's, the shipping container was a good shape for that. Um, I think you had some like sprinklers and hoses and things in there as well. Um, but now, I was in there, um, right after the Easter egg hunt, um, there's like soccer team t-shirts and sign-up forms and things like that, so I think it's kind of our concern that teams are kind of using it as a storage building. People are coming in and out of it, so it's being used more as a, like a structure than a, just a storage container. So, yeah, there's some concerns there.
Well, Dave, getting that thing out is, it's gonna be.
I, I have nothing to move. I, I mean, I would just put it out there, that thing weighs a, weighs a ton, so you'd have to hire a company to come out and move it.
Is it gonna destroy all the grass and everything or?
Uh, you'd probably have to take the fence down in that area to get to it and everything else. Cause you can't, you couldn't take a, a trailer down around the ditch line and, you know, back around the fence. You'd have to take fence down in that area to get them in.
So, Holly, I don't know if that's something we wanted a legal opinion on, or if we wanted to consult with an architect or something on that, how we could convert it to make it work or?
Yeah, well, and I think the question is, should we convert it, or is the storage con- container permitted in that area? Is that, is that, is that in conflict with anything?
Well, I mean, it's government property, so, you know, we could, you could look at it as they're exempt from, from the codes, unless you guys wanna follow the same resolution as the rest of the township.
The township doesn't permit storage containers, but then we have.
Well, over two hundred square feet, you have to have a building permit, okay? So then, uh, that's over two hundred square feet, so you, you have to go to the building department and then they're going to put, adjudicate it. I'm sure, you know, just, I don't wanna speak for the building department, just being a building official myself, you have to have a means of egress as, as well as fire department, so where are these means of egress? You can't trap somebody in a stored container. You have to have windows and escape routes and doors have to be accessible from the inside out, things of that nature.
So from the building department, right now, that's not a compliant?
Oh, oh, no, I think Charles, uh, who works for, uh, the fire department, I think, has warned you, uh, several times that it's not safe.
We need to change.
Just move it on.
Yeah, well, and the question is, you know, again, even with the future, you know, of those fields, you know, do, we know that, we know that, um, the schools are looking at increasing the fields there, so do we want to invest in, you know, do we sell this shipping container? Do we really wanna invest in getting a shed, knowing that, you know, in a couple of years, those fields might be repurposed? You know, there's just kind of a lot of things, I think, that the board needs to make some decisions on, on what we do with it, but in the end, we need to, we need to do something with that shipping container sooner rather than later.
Well, I mean, I'd, I'd make a motion, but what kind of motion am I making? You know, I mean, we need, I mean, if we've been warned by the building inspector, now we're warned by Otarma. I mean, we have to do something.
You could just raise a motion based off the recommendations we got from other places that were removing it.
Yeah, it's, I think, a couple of options, we, we remove it and in that, we're either selling it or repurposing it. Um, and then do we wanna replace it with a shed?
Do we, uh, I don't wanna pull the rug out of anybody, but don't, shouldn't we at least, uh, I mean, consult, you know, with the people that use the field and let them know what we're up against?
Yeah, I mean, in the end, we, we'll just need to make a decision, so if, you know, knowing that the soccer teams do use it for storage, if we're looking to remove it, then the board would need to decide to replace it, so that they can, again, use it for storage. Um, it, it really, it just depends on what we're trying to provide, you know. Numbers of cities and other entities don't provide storage on their fields, it's a nice thing that we do. Do we, do we have the money to invest in something else to provide that courtesy? It's really.
If it just has t-shirts and stuff, I mean, that is stuff that could be.
Put in garage, yeah, put in somebody's garage. Well, I would just, just to mention, I mean, the Athletic Association runs the fields in the back that are actually owned by Brim, uh, Field Local Schools. They have sheds in the back, they have any, any of that stuff is run by the Athletic Association. Brimfield Elementary or Field Local Schools is not contributing to any of that. Same thing with Southfield and their programs down there, they're all run by the, the leagues that run them. So I would feel that the league would provide that on their, on their field. I mean, they have a storage bin over on one of the soccer, uh, baseball fields in the back, for their climbers and all that kinda stuff that was the Athletic Association put in. So I would think that they would, they'd be the one that would put it in.
Well, since we have two entities that's already given us that, no, you're not doing the right thing with that, I think our motion right now would be to, um, go to the point where we get rid of the, we just get rid of it. Sell it or take it down to the road department or do something, but at least it'd get us off the hot seat where we're not being compliant.
I think in the meantime, while we figure out if we wanna sell it or move it, in the meantime, it's probably a good idea to prohibit usage of it, um, just because we know there's risk and there's hazards. Um, so I think at a minimum, you know, restricting any use right now and then us moving forward to determine if we're either gonna sell it or repurpose it.
So that's your motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion, how do I word it? I don't know about that.
You're making a motion that, uh, to remove the.
Cause you know, we got, we got the building department and the OTA and that against.
To remove the storing, storage container due to recommendations from Otarma and the building departments.
Portage County Building Department.
Uh, use processes, we don't, I mean, I'll word it some other way, but we're gonna, we're gonna remove it because we've been, we've been told by two different, you know, places, one's our insurance carrier, um, that has said, hey, you need to get rid of this.
Well, what, what is your fire inspector?
And his fire inspector and, yeah.
The plants examiner for the fire group?
That's what I would put out there, Sue, let me figure out.
Then read it back and I'm gonna hear what it says. But we, with, with those different entities telling us no, well, we go.
Gotta listen.
Well, if we go against the recommendation, if something happens, the township's liable.
Right, and Otarma is our insurance company.
Until they come back and say, sorry, we warned you, we're not paying for anything. Um, to remove the storage container at Town Center Fields due to safety concerns. Concerns brought to our attention. Attention by Otarma and. What's it, in the Portage County Building Department?
And the fire, uh, fire department's plants examiner.
Okay. Okay, and I'll second that. Okay, so, you know, we're gonna make sure, we need to get in contact with the people that have effects and explain them, explain to them why we have to do it.
Absolutely.
Holly, are you able to handle that, or Cassie would handle it?
Cassie and I will check out everything.
And then, do we just, well, we have that, let's vote on this one first, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, you wanna read it back to me?
Um, to remove the storage container at the Town Center Fields due to safety concerns brought to our attention by Otarma and the fire department's planning examiner.
Okay.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed. And then, um, so you guys are gonna figure out, you're gonna tell them, but then you're gonna figure out what we do to get it out of there and how much it costs and do all that.
And would it be worth just, if Dave doesn't have any need for it, is it worth just selling it?
You're, you're best bet if you're gonna bring some in and move it, cause you're gonna have to bring company in to move it, we don't have nothing big enough to pick it up, you might, I'd say just get rid of it.
Cause you don't need it for storage.
No, I, no, it's not safe for them, I mean, I'm sure somebody might come back and say it's not safe for us.
Right.
So we, we don't, we don't need that, I'm shocked.
So maybe you can find someone.
Yeah.
We're not gonna help with the moving.
Yeah, hopefully, we, we'll look into it, but hopefully, we'll, we'll just sell it and buyer picks it up, so, you know, we'll work on how we can tie that together.
Yeah, I mean, they're not a big high dollar item. I mean, I think, probably under two thousand bucks, but.
And we could always, you know, based on the money that we earn from selling it, we could look at trying to find a reasonable structure for similar costs, that way it's a, it's a launch.
Well, when you're trying to, trying to set a price, go to Facebook and type in storage containers and be ready for an onslaught.
So, so whatever would be approved, would, so that was a conditional use within the town center? So any changes, so if, uh, we remove it and put a different container, it has to go in front of the board's zoning field?
Even if it's just like a storage unit or a shed?
Yeah, it's a change to the conditional use, so it's just a formality, but the, since it didn't come through me, it goes through the board, so.
So if, if they did, if they'd have to bring it to you guys for approval, their organization?
Well, you gotta do that, you know, it's, it's make sure we do it the right way.
Right, but it wouldn't be us, it would be whoever's requesting it.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be buying.
Right.
All right.
Okay, and then the last item, um, that I wanted to address was, they noted that, um, they would recommend a barrier between the gazebo platform and the rocks near the fire station building, um, to prevent falls, because that area, um, there's, it's pretty easy to fall off of there when I was, um.
You definitely need something there. Weren't we looking into that at one point?
I think we were at one point, but I just.
Yeah, so I, I think the question is, you know, I think when we thought they were putting in the landscaping, there were gonna be like taller trees or bushes there, but they're not, they're small, um, and they're not, they're not going to grow tall.
And that bush, those bushes are gonna keep.
No, they're not, so.
Apple from falling off.
Yeah, so that's the question, you know, do we wanna, what is the board's preference? Do we wanna look at getting maybe some smaller tree type things? Do we wanna look at some type of fencing, um?
My suggestion would be some kind of secure fencing, cause you sure don't want somebody falling off there. And that's something I think we need to get done. I mean, I'm glad you got this put up out here, I mean, something similar to this, maybe?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we just, we gotta be secure.
Yeah.
I mean, we have an aging population, I know it.
We do?
Yeah, and you're just getting younger.
I am, I, God is good.
Yeah, okay, so, so we, do we, we don't, do we need to make a motion for her to start looking?
Yeah, we'll get some pricing and if the pricing is higher, then we'll bring it back to the board, we'll let you guys know what we end up doing, but, um.
We just make it, make sure it's compliant and secure.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
You know, not something we go down to Lowe's and just buy a wooden fence.
No.
Something secure.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then my last item under new business is, I am working on a partnership with UH, um, to bring some no-cost senior fitness programs to the Parks Department. We've been doing some yoga programs, um, that have been very successful, um, unfortunately, those do come with an instructor fee for us, so I'm just looking at some ways to supplement those programs, um, and so I'm hoping to hear back from UH soon to bring those programs here, so.
Oh, that's great, does the BA willing to give us any money down there now that they're a new partner in town with those kinds of things?
I have not asked them, but I sure can. Yeah, I've reached out to some businesses too, I'm waiting to hear back, um, on a business partner for our yoga programs too. We've been providing those at a pretty low cost, we've had them, um, when we introduced them, we had them free for Brimfield residents and five dollars for non-residents, um, cause obviously, we wanna keep those low costs for the seniors, but it's not really sustainable, so we're looking for a business partner if anybody would like to partner with us.
I just wonder, you know, cause, uh, you know, I, I walk at the Town and Rec.
Mm-hmm.
And I know senior citizens, they get, uh, to all the places around, they get free walking and stuff.
Yeah, is that the Silver Sneakers program, Silver Sneakers program?
Yeah, something like that, but there's a lot of free programs.
Mm-hmm.
I just wonder, I don't know how you get involved with that, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know if there's money to Parks programs or, you know, I don't know if, I don't get that yet, because, you know, but I know, John, you know some of that stuff, I mean.
Yeah, any of those Medicare Advantage ones out there, they all offer Silver Sneakers, which are free, and they can join every place around here inside of Ritz Town, but the Sequoia Wellness Center is the only one that does not take Silver Sneakers. Um, everybody else around here, Kent State, the Planet Fitness, Town and Rec, the YMCA's, they all take it.
Yeah, I didn't know if that Silver Sneakers, you know, cross the line for other things like yoga or whatever. You know, cause I know they're trying to keep the people moving.
Well, if they have them, I don't know when you join the Town and Rec, does your membership card get you into every event over there? Do you have to pay separate if they're having a yoga class?
I don't know.
Because all it is, it's gonna give you a membership to the, to Town and Rec, and I don't know what comes with that, if those are special things they have to use or not, they can just.
Why don't you call the Town and Rec?
Yeah, I can.
Have you ever gone there and looked at it?
I have, yes.
It's a nice place.
Um, I was, I haven't been a member of the Town and Rec, but I was a member of the Natatorium for a number of years and all those classes were always included in your membership.
Yeah, I'm glad to see you're doing these senior things, cause I gotta tell you, these are the people that really like this kinda stuff.
Mm-hmm, yeah, our yoga classes have been full or nearly full for each session, yeah.
That's great.
The Nets part is over, she's just.
Yeah.
I think it's, even if it, it does cost something, it's a great benefit for the, for the people of the township, cause it's their money we're spending.
Yeah.
You know, so don't feel bad about that, I mean, it's.
The problem is they want more though. They would do yoga every day.
What I love about those, that's a program you can put on and all you have to do is get the instructor.
Yes.
And so, you know, it's just that you're offering a great opportunity for these people.
Mm-hmm.
Especially in the winter when they're stuck inside and maybe get an axe throwing class for seniors, that would be great.
Yeah, why not?
So, okay, feeling, well, thanks, Cassie, you're doing a good job. Is that all you got now?
That was all I had.
Okay.
Go.
I gotta change a little bit of wording, um, I had a phone, similar to what Cassie was continuing to work through some.
We can't hear you.
I'm gonna come up here, John.
All we see is this little head bombing.
You wanna do, use the microphone so they can hear you online?
Then I can really hear you.
Here, George, you can have mine.
It would've been great if he was on his body.
Um, continue to work through the task list that Otarma gave us.
Put the mic to your.
You're picking on me.
Put it up a little bit.
Um, one of the items was, uh, making sure that our township servers are up to date, um, and in a prior meeting, you guys approved, um, purchasing the latest version of Windows Server, and I'm working on a plan to get everything upgraded. The fire department slash town hall servers are upgraded, and I'm working with Captain Atkins on a plan for the police department. Um, but to follow up on that, I'm continuing to go through our, our key network and hardware devices and making sure that they are also up to date and compliant. Um, and so the, the next item that I, uh, I'm gonna be, uh, getting, be doing is continuing the hardware and software support, uh, from Dell. So we run Dell servers here and the, uh, warranties on those servers have expired this year. Um, so I've got a, uh, a quote from them, I didn't bring my thing in front of me, it's about twelve hundred dollars for, we got the agenda?
Eleven, eleven seventy-three.
Yes, um, and that will give us the, uh, continuing next, our four-hour response from Dell for the next two years. So that'll warranty our four servers continuing through twenty twenty-seven.
But those are servers that we had in the old building that we brought over?
Yes, yeah, these, these would be hardware that was purchased, um, three years ago, so it would've been in twenty twenty-two. Um, there, we, the, the township purchased actually six servers, um, two of them have been, are not in use, so I'm not continuing their support, but we have two servers that are supporting the town hall and fire department, so this side of the building, the road, and then we have two servers that are in the police department.
Are they all still capable, no?
Oh, yes, they are, they are perfectly capable, um, as I said, the two servers that are on this side have already been upgraded to server twenty twenty-five and are running fine, um, and now, I'm just gonna put together a plan to get the, uh, the police department, um, up on that. They're, they're a little bit more trickier, because we don't, the fire department, while they are here twenty-four seven, they're not accessing the servers twenty-four seven, so that's, it's easier for me to do maintenance on them, they don't, they, they don't notice when they're down. Um, because they, they do everything in the cloud, so there's no local file store for the fire department. So if the server was to go down, they, they really wouldn't notice unless it was down for a long period of time, whereas the, the police department does have local files that are stored, so when the server's offline, they're not, there's a portion of their job they're not able to do, um, so that's why I have to coordinate that with them.
And this one's for the, the PD?
So the, the quote is for both, all four servers?
Oh, okay.
So fifty percent of that would be the police department, the other half would be Ag.
Well, this is a general fund expenditure anyway.
Right, so it's, it's, it's just continuing the maintenance of those servers, since they're still gonna be in production at least for the next two years. I don't see any reason that they wouldn't serve their purpose for another two years.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve one thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty cents for a Dell server support extension.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed.
That's all I have for the board, thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay, cemetery?
Yeah, I just wanna do an FYI on the cemetery for the Memorial Day service at the end of May. Everything is going along good, and we're, Gendi is working up, pulling, putting, pulling it all together for us in a nice package, and I appreciate her work on doing this. And looking forward to a good, a good memorial service for the community.
Thank you, Sid. John, fiscal?
We have a liquor permit, and I'm confused about this one, I'm not confused, but I thought they were bringing the discount drug mart, it's for discount drug mart, it's a new C for the new building there. I thought they were bringing the Kent one down here, but I guess they're not, they're, so I don't know what they're doing with the Kent discount drugs liquor permit, but they have a request here. We're being given the chance to go get a hearing at the county seat in, or in Columbus to contest or have questions about this, or we're given the ability to, to say we don't wanna have a hearing. So we have to put it in a positive.
I'm gonna make a motion that we request from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, inclining if the board wants to put, you know, if you want a hearing or not.
Sue?
Second.
So all in favor, Mike?
No.
Sue?
No.
Okay, so motion failed, so we will check this, that we are not requesting a hearing with them, don't need it. Thank you, guys.
Now we got a executive session to consider the purchase of property for public purchase. This date for sixteen twenty-five, trustee Michael Stensky moved to convene in the executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section one twenty-one dash twenty-two G, for the purpose of considering the following. Number two, consider the purchase of property for public purchase or for sale of property at a competitive bidding. If premature disclosure of the information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest. No member of a public body shall use division G dash two of this purchase as a subterfuge for providing covert information to prospective buyers or sellers. A purchase or sale of public property is void if the seller or buyer of the public property has received covert information from a member of the public body that has not been disclosed to the general public in a sufficient time for other prospective buyers and sellers to prepare and submit offer. If the minutes of the public body show that all meetings and deliberations of the public body have been conducted in compliance with this section, any instrument executed by the public body according to convey lease or otherwise dispose of any gift, or any right, title, or interest in any public property shall be conclusively presumed to have been executed in compliance with this section insofar as title or other interest of a bona fide purchaser leasing or transferring this property is concerned. Okay?
So you're making that motion?
I'm making that motion.
Second.
So all in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
We are in executive session at nine eighteen.
Okay, give me five minutes.
We're gonna meet in that room back there.
Okay, we're out of executive session and I'm going to make a motion that we end this meeting.
Second.
Well, in favor of Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 9:52 AM.
Sure.